Okay. Good evening and welcome to the Northman City Council regular session for Tuesday, January ninth at seven P M here in the council chambers. The city recorder, shall we go ahead and take roll call this evening?
Yes. Counselor Jones.
President.
Counselor Hamilton.
President.
Counselor Garland.
President.
Mayor Abelkey.
President.
Counselor Goll.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Here.
Counselor Norah.
President.
All right, after calling the meeting to order, let's go ahead and say the pledge of allegiance. I impressed, I said I was.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands alone in this law of liberty and justice.
All right.
Welcome Albert.
All right, welcome. Thank you, everybody, for being here this evening. We always appreciate attending our city council meetings, whether they're here in person or online, watching live or at another point. So we appreciate you participating in local government. After calling the meeting to order tonight, I'll go ahead and move to it. Agenda item number two, and that's our consent calendar. Do we have a motion from the council?
I think the motion will be accepted. Consent calendar is presented.
Okay, first from Counselor Gar Boden, second from Counselor Goll. Any discussion? All in favor of accepting the consent calendar as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number three on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody here for public comment this evening? We do not. No one here present or no one online or both. Thank you. All right, nobody for public comment. Then that takes us to number four, which is item staff concerns regarding disruptive behavior at public meetings. Is there a motion from the council?
I make motion pursuant to council rule two point zero, four point two one zero, the council temporarily suspend beginning now until the full council receives the city council investigation report. Any council ruling regarding interaction with city staff of the manner as they relate to Counselor Norah. One, she does not contact staff directly, including the city administrator. Two, her official request, staff are to go through the council during regular council meetings. And three, she may contact the mayor and or the city attorney regarding any routine city business.
Okay, I hear a first from Counselor Gar Boden on the, or I'm sorry, I hear a motion. Is there so we have a motion at first? Why am I screwing this up?
So per council rules, you got a first, second before, and then you'll want to open it for discussion. Before closing, you want to restate the motion.
Okay.
And then call the question.
So we had the motion, it was our first from Counselor Gar Boden. Our second was from Counselor Goll, and now I'd like to open it up for discussion. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay. All right, so there's no discussion on the motion. The motion was that Counselor Gar Boden made a motion to move that pursuant to council rule two point zero one, two one zero, that the council temporarily suspend beginning now until the full council receives the city council investigation report that any council rules regarding interaction with city staff in the following manner as they relate to Counselor Norah. One, that she is not to contact staff directly, including the city administrator. Two, that her official request of staff are to go through the full council during the regular council meetings. And three, that she may contact the mayor and or the city attorney regarding any routine business. We had a first, we had a second, we have not had any discussion. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
We have one opposed. Motion carries. Okay, so that is what was item four on the agenda for staff concerns regarding disruptive behavior. And so that takes us to number five, which is welcome to the North Ben sign. Is there a motion from the council?
I move to approve the installation of the welcome to North Ben sign by the art signs for three thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars.
Okay, I heard a first from Counselor Schultz.
Second.
Yeah, second from Counselor Jones, and that was on welcome to North Ben. Just getting there so we can read it. So all in favor to approve the installation. So we had a first, we had a second. Was there any discussion? All in favor to improve the installation of the welcome to North Ben signed by arts designed for sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty six dollars, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay. That was welcome to North Ben sign. We did not have an executive section, so we can move on from item six, and that takes us to number seven, which is the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, counsel. I will apologize, I'm behind in getting this in printed form. I have been working since Thursday with the outside investigation, and unfortunately, it's consumed almost my entire time for the last five days. I will say that we have provided the investigator now over three hundred eighty-two documents. That said, couple things. The city charter gives the city administrator authority to combine or merge positions and duties. I have done that with the Parks Department and the Facilities and Pool. Today, Mr. Aaron Bixler has started with the city. You'll meet him at the next council meeting. He is now our Parks and Facilities Manager. That will take all the budgetary and supervisory into one position for parks, the pool, and facilities. We then without increasing the F T E, will now have a Parks Foreman. That Parks Foreman will be a working foreman, very much like we already have in the Streets Department and also in the wastewater treatment plan. And so after working and talking with staff, trying to find someone with both an administrative supervisory and operational hands-on skill in those three was difficult. We will be putting out information in the next couple of days as I have with any new employee. Aaron comes with extensive skill set, a lot in code enforcement, animal control, law enforcement. He has worked in the prison system, former military. And so staff, when they did the panel interview, was absolutely impressed that he appeared head and shoulders above the rest. We are currently in recruitment for the Parks Foreman. We are advertising that both internally and externally. I believe we've already received in excess of a dozen applications. And that will be his hire, and there will be a panel as normal for that position. I want to mention that the twenty twenty-four awards banquet for the chambers coming up. It is Saturday, January twenty seventh. There are tickets, sixty-five dollars per guest, or a table of ten for six fifty. It would be helpful if the council will let me know if they would like to attend the banquet at the casino, and if so, staff will go ahead and secure tickets. So now would be a good time to let me know. If you don't know your calendar right now, if you get to me by the end of the week, that would be great, and we'll secure that. Want to give a shout out to the North Bend Public Library Foundation. They received a two thousand six hundred twenty-five dollar grant from the Otzen Foundation to support the next phase of the library restoration project, and those funds will be used for improvements to the children's room. Also, the city recorder, H R is currently creating test tutorials for the new Parks and Facilities Manager position. As you're well aware, Ms. Macy has been filling in at the pool and sort of doing the administrative management side and learning lots. I tell her, hey, it's a great opportunity because it's like a sauna over there. Today's the first day that she said she really enjoyed that. It's a little hotter than she's probably used to, and so I want to give her a great shout out. We have heard rave reviews from Macy's participation at the pool and taking over that lead position. And we look for great things from Aaron moving that forward. The fire department has completed its annual Christmas tree pickup. These get a fire hazard out of the homes. Also, all donations, they always ask if you kindly send in a donation. It's not required, but they pick up the Christmas tree, and then that goes into their Christmas fund for next year. They do it very stealthy. They get a list from the school system, and then they, right before Christmas, they fan out and distribute food and all of the Christmas presents and toys for the kids, and it's a great program and project. Our Public Works department head is on vacation, but he still insisted on submitting his report over to me. So you'll notice that the Washington Street parking lot is now paved, striping, well, we can't stripe in the the rain, but they hope to get that done here this month, and then also put in parking bumpers. And so right now, staff in Public Works is in full swing of doing business license renewals. The construction at seven forty-five California, which is the new bit, is now out of demolition phase and is actual building improvement progressing. It is a little behind. We were hoping by April. Now we're expecting probably June, but that is moving forward. Speaking of greatness, the Police Department had made application through our insurance company and was able to get what called the wrap or the wraps. I don't know where your thing with you. Oh, never mind. It's right here in front of me. I wrote all over it. Sorry, chief. Apologize about that. But was able to secure four wrap or straight systems which are used to transport competitive subjects. If you would like, we can do a demo here in the council chambers. We just need a volunteer from the council, and we'll wrap you up. And
Like now, today?
No, we'll give you a couple of weeks to think about it. Because you ain't moving after they wrap you. But they are going through, we'll go through all of that training. They also have their new tasers. One of them was faulty. We had to send it back. They have gone through that training, and shortly after training, unfortunately, had to use it at their, one of their first calls. And it works. And then last but not least, kudos to Stephanie Wilson and her team at the ice skating rink. They are breaking all-time records with participation and events. They really stepped up with a lot of theme nights. Word has it that supposedly one of our department heads is going to do a karaoke night at the end of the month, and then has duties the next day as a D J at the high school dance, so they must know what they're doing. And the Liberty Theater's Blade sign is going to be dedicated on the nineteenth. You'll want to get that on your schedule. Activities will be at five thirty. And then there's the opening of their play that evening, and so if you haven't got your tickets, you'll want to get them, and that concludes the let me not just assume since I wrote all of your reports. Dang, is mine just that bad? Yep, we're all good. Thank you.
All right, perfect. I was making note that Liberty Theater, I'm going to be out of town on the nineteenth.
Watch it live.
Let's, yes, yes, I'll try to watch it live, but hopefully some of the council members can go. Some may be able to walk right to it so close to their house.
Yeah, we got a special guest coming in for it.
Oh, fun. Okay. All right, so that takes us to, that was our city administrator, city administrator report. So now we're on to committee reports, and I think the Special Events Committee is the only one reporting on this evening. We had a conversation last night in the work session where I had gone over, you know, the, remember the task of the Special Events Committee initially was to do some research and to find out if it was warranted to move forward with the July Jubilee celebration, which is really the celebration of our city's birthday, and then to come back to the council and then make a recommendation to the council, which we did. We went through that process already, and we had voted as a council that we did want to move forward with the July Jubilee. And so then we tasked the Special Events Committee to kind of look out there to see, knowing that we have such limited resources, what are some events that are already happening that weekend, and what are some events that could be sustainable on their own? So that's where Counselor Hamilton and I and the other events committee members sort of divided up some work, and I spoke last night for the majority of it. So if you want to talk to, I know you've had a conversation with a business owner about the cornhole.
You know, so Mary Abelkey put out a list of some of the stuff that we kind of talked to people about or got a, I'll give thumbs up on a couple of them that were, the cartoons are still a possibility, which I think we would need a route of the city blessed, you know, please G two. Mark Manacheck, who has the bowling alley, I talked to him. He was all for doing a cornhole tournament. Either we can, if somebody wants to run it, or he would do it. He said he's done free bowling in the past, could do the bowling tournament. So there's all types of stuff right there at the bowling alley, whether another group, I don't know if there's any softball or, you know, other kids' sports, baseball teams will want to jump in and do something like that for a fundraiser for them. You know, we've talked in that council or the council goals for the year. When that was all taking place, from what I know, was all during like COVID. And so everybody's thought, I'm thinking is, was on COVID getting back and the camping ordinance was a big deal at that time. So back then, thinking forward, nobody was really interested in doing a festival because, you know, nobody could get together for anything. So I think that probably the council at the time's vision at that time was totally different than what it is today. And so other people I've talked to in the community are really happy about us bringing that back and having a big celebration for the whole weekend. And I have heard a whole lot of negative. It's all been positive. They can't wait for all these events to take place, be part of them, be active in them. And so, and I thanked the council last night for, you know, looking at funds and possibly allowing some of those funds to get allocated towards the Jubilee. So I see a lot of good things happen. We've got new people coming on the
Two, three.
And the right now, one of the things that was talked about too was getting these applications out and getting our apprentices to get, to start that whole thing, and we need to go forward or figure out how we're going to do our panel, go with the subcommittee, or however we need to do that to get that process going. And I still think Sarah Wicks, was Sarah, was going to go forward with kind of lead that for this time, to get this thing back off the ground and get it going again. Because, I mean, you walk down to the halls and there's years and years of girls that went through this, and I'm sure it's had an impact on their life. At the end, but they can all look back and especially come walk through the halls and see them. So I think it's a good thing. So I appreciate the support.
I, I got a couple things just to dovetail onto that. I, you know, I think the more of these Mark Manacheck things that come out in front of us, and he takes the ball and runs with that, that's one less burden on the city staff. And I however these phones work nowadays, my wife got a call from Hawaii last night saying that Barb Rose, or Barb Dunham, sorry, had heard David mention her name, and she's pretty looking forward to meeting with the committee on the Main Street giddyup. So it, it made it all the way to Hawaii.
Like that.
Yeah.
So in the consent calendar tonight, we did appoint three new members. So I think that puts us at seven, and we said max commit, and our city can record can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think our amount that we had set for the committee was nine. So we still have room for two more people if anybody's watching and wants to be a part of that. I think Barb Dunham is actually on the Main Street.
That's what I said.
Yeah, but she, I think she could be on.
Meeting with the committee to, you know, further the Main Street giddyup down there and see if the businesses will take some, another ball.
Yeah.
So.
So and I'll tell you one other, I got some information today because I think I had mentioned it in the previous council meeting, is that Rotary is looking to do a fundraiser to do this thing where they drop these rubber cats and dogs from a helicopter or a train, train, crane. And sometimes I worry I'm hanging this story. And the anyways, they let me know today because I was like, hey, if you guys end up doing that, they were looking at actually Fourth of July weekend, and you wanted to do it during Jubilee weekend. That's another really cool thing that could happen. And I love it because it's a little bit of a nod to the eighties when they did the ping pong ball drop from the sky. And I'm like, there's got to be a way to kind of like tie in something to the celebration. And so they confirmed that they did, the Rotary Board did agree to have that on Saturday, the thirteenth at ten A M. So they're still working out all the details. They're working with the high school, and they're working with the Coast Guard and how this, what this would look like. What would it look like with these raining cats and dogs balls and how, how we could make it part of a community event? So I was really glad to hear last night when we talked about the revenue sharing to sort of say, hey, there's a bucket of money here that we could use to help support this somehow. And, and it does appear that there's also some potential grant money maybe from the V C B. So we are looking at, you know, a nice size of money. So I think that we're at this point where maybe we need to we're very aware of the budgetary restraints and the staff restraints. So do we now go to the city administrator and say, should we consider using this money to hire a temporary part-time person to be the coordinator of it and, and be that, you know, you still, we've, we've identified these big things that are happening. We know that Main Street wants me to come talk to them, and they could potentially do something during the July Jubilee. How do we coordinate all that together? Is it possible? And would that be something that would help the staff if we took that money and used it to hire a part-time person to be the coordinator of that?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, as I suggested to you in in Counselor Hamilton, after last night's meeting, your capacity as a committee member, if, if the council takes action to actually allocate that money, because they haven't yet, they have to allocate that money, and they have to be specific as to how they do it. Then, yes, we, we can look at having a contract part-time, whether through Core or Neural Cardinal or whatever, or potentially even extend a part-time hours, as long as we don't get into a full-time situation, to help coordinate some of those activities.
Okay, so what would be the steps then to do that, to allocate that money? Because as, as each two weeks go on, I worry that we're going to keep moving further and down the road. Yes.
Well, I thought that we were going to have someone go to the Main Street Committee to see if they would pick it up so that we don't have to worry about spending money to hire a person. If they pick it up, then they would potentially run it and help or help run it. So I thought you were going to try and see if we could put on it to the, the Main Street Committee. So I would say not yet.
I, I don't know if I was, if I understood that the same way.
Because they, they do a lot of activities in the events, and so I thought we were giving them ideas, and they might, might say that's, we really want to be a part of this. We want to make, like, run it. I thought that's what was said last night.
Did I misunderstand that?
That's not what I took.
That's because
It's not what I took away as well. I, I think there was a lot of discussion. The purpose of going to the Main Street was to see what activities they potentially could do that they already do or want to extend to do and see what kind of commitment you could get from them. But, you know, there's lots of models. As I said to the mayor multiple times, the city could base not in the event business, nor is North Bend. We, we you know, you, I mean, I think I tried to be as frank as I could last night, not being specific. A lot of the events, so we do the Christmas event. That, that is like the big event. The other little events that you see is really me scraping off some of time from our Main Street visitor, U R A person, and a whole lot of weekend time by mid. And, and so that's why you see me out there. And so we actually don't have the resources. And then you then get volunteers from department heads that step up where they can, and they help. And, and so that's how we've been pulling it off. But as I say, hook and crook. The public doesn't realize that we're doing all this, and when I say shoe strength, I mean like one shift. And so it works. And so I can't tell you how blessed I am that we finally got the, the ice skating rink fully up and running, because when I got sick, there's no way I could have done what I was doing last year. And so we, we, we literally scrape off. You know, I have been in cities where a, a, you know, and I gave you the example of the city of Hogansville. She, she just retired at the end of the year. But Mary was the wife of the mayor. She, they, they ran an antique store, and so when she wasn't busy, she literally was coordinating throughout a whole year that festival, and that's what she would do. Then you see like Coos Bay where they have the Rotary, or they have the Lions, or other entities, or they have the nonprofit fun festival, but they also have a paid merchants association where they're paying into it, and so they have as a merchants association staff that focuses on that. We hear, and by the way, they are actually, if you notice that they, that they're bifurcating some things. For instance, their, their market is coming out from underneath, that appears. They, they are advertising for more of a Main Street, very much in line with what some of North Bend's doing. And, and, you know, I'll gladly recirculate the contract because not everybody here on the council was here when you entered into the Main Street contract, but we have specific things that that staff person has to do. We are currently picking up that in order to sustain it because when I got here, one of the goals was that we would reinvigorate our downtown program because it had gone. And so as I talk to folks, that's because it was all volunteer driven. It got down to one or two folks, and they got burned out. And so we, we picked it up, and, and the way I have it structured is so that we can always make sure that it continues and thrives. Regarding the council rules, I mean, council goals, these current council goals actually were started by this new council, and they were adopted earlier this year. So these particular goals actually are actually pretty fresh. And the council reviews them every two years with, but you can review them at any time. So if you want to reorganize some of your priorities, just say so, we'll put it on agenda. Get back to your question, how do you allocate the money? Put it on agenda. We get it with, with the paperwork, and you can have it on your next agenda. So I hope that sort of clears out some of the clarity.
An issue, yeah.
Yeah.
It's a commitment issue.
What year did the year start?
Oh, in the eighty, I mean, we've had a birthday celebration for years.
It's been, I think it's before the, right?
No.
Early eighty-one, eighty.
Oh, yeah.
Well.
But I mean, this thing's been going for years.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree, and it's going to go this year. So.
However, we need to work it out.
Yeah.
So, so what was the direction that you said that we need to take to allocate that money towards a part-time person?
Got to put it on the agenda.
Put it on the next agenda, and you, you, you know, we'll make it happen.
Okay, all right. So I guess that's us then putting that request to you to put that on the next agenda. I just, I'm getting worried that we keep moving things down the road, but we've got to make sure that we follow the right process to do that. And then
If you're using the money, you're you're not stopped from getting folks and organizing things and having the committee work with things and putting in. Special event applications and us vetting it, which we normally do. There's nothing stopping you from organizing all those events.
Okay.
Or those entities organizing those events.
And we probably should then, as it's the beginning of the year, revisit some of those goals and. And I think you made a comment about looking at like, are we, are we? Um are there, are there different priorities that are raising, rising? You are hearing from this council that we want the July Jubilee to have happen. We took that vote. We want to move forward with that. We need to figure out if that is like how to make that happen, not just. For this year, but also preparing for the next budget year too.
The council actually has to redefine its goals, Madam Mayor. It's not, you 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 can discuss. You have to take action.
Yeah.
And so you created an ad hoc committee that goes back to recommendations to the body. The body accepts it, but the body actually hasn't affected anything. For staff, budget, or anything. So I want to be very clear on that, that the governing body actually has to take some action. And they have not regarding budget staffing priorities. So that has to happen. There's nobody. Sort of stopping you.
So what would that action be then? You're saying take actions. So how do we do that?
Want the redo the council goals, you can do that at your next meeting. If you want to allocate funds, you can do that at your next meeting. If you wanna um uh have staff prioritize or or changes in the staff, you need to put that on your next agenda.
So so I. I'm concerned about putting the cart before the horse here um because we have. The city administrator and we have a part-time Main Street who's almost full-time, right? So like even if. She agreed to a few extra hours in a period of time, it's two, it's already really close to full-time. And the money we would be able to reserve for her is roughly, or for this whole thing is roughly a week grant. Right? So that's not a lot for a qualified person to coordinate much. And I feel like there's some middle ground here and I I don't know. How to even sort of mitigate that because I don't want attention to be pulled away. From um all the grant writing process and all that stuff that is in June. Like I I think your deadlines are mostly in June.
We're in hard budget season right now.
Right? So I don't. This is cool and we have a lot of people here who are willing to take the full burden, it seems like. And that's great, but I also don't want to have this turn into. Something that sucks up a bunch of time during a critical period. When when the time is better suited for the grant writing and all of that process. You know, so so that that's a big concern for me. And so I'm curious if there's any way we can um. Move forward perhaps in a smaller way, you know, for example, like um I think you guys said that there's. Probably at least half of these events are either happening already. Or the people already know how to do any events or anything, so it would be at no cost to the city. And the one connection is that they get on some kind of common calendar and that's it, right? So perhaps that's what this year looks like and we can allocate money to staff for a few extra hours or whatever they. Do, but it seems much more possible to have this first one. Be composed of events that are completely independent. All that needs to happen on the staffing side is some kind of um very small amount of branding, you know, co-branding. Um and that's it. So there's not. A whole new staff person or a whole new part-time person or anything like that.
A lot of that legwork has been done. You know, a lot of that legwork has been done.
And and you know, you you gotta have some faith in, I mean, you got some pretty good names on that deal there and and. Yeah, uh we gotta give them a little bit of rope to go do something, yeah.
The idea of the the money to kind of, because what I thought I was hearing last night is like you still. You got, you still have to have somebody coordinate that. And even though a lot of this legwork has been done. Whatever Main Street decides to do, we'll probably, they'll have, that'll be its own thing. And then, but you still need kind of a coordinator. So it was, I'm, you know, I think you could do, even if it was saved five thousand dollars. You run the math on how many hours that would be just to take the burden off of staff. And again, I want to make sure that I'm speaking, you know, for what the council wants. The council voted to move July Jubilee forward. I am hearing for the majority of you that this is a priority. And if it's not, you know, like, you you know, tell me, but that's why I'm like, what is, what is the next step?
It's a priority that doesn't fall ahead of any work.
Right, there's obviously, when I say priority, like there's obviously like bigger, you know. Things that the staff needs to do, but that doesn't mean that, I mean, this happened for forty plus years, the July Jubilee. So how do we figure out a way to like, you know, it's a reinvention of it and it's gonna look a little bit differently, but how do we move, how do we move this forward? And I think also. You know, we as we enter budget season, it probably is time to go ahead and say like, if we want that to be. You know, I think the word was like, you know, reorganizing our goals. Um that would be our time in the next couple of months to do that before June, the same like.
I agree, but even redoing the goals, I am never gonna say yes to. I I'm always gonna say the the financial longevity of the city comes before fun things.
Sure.
And in when the, when the, when the disconnect happens. Is when the deadlines and the the purposeful work. Overlap in the same timeframe. And I think you know well that events planning in particular is hurting cats. It's hurting very opinionated cats who have a lot of needs. They want treats. And they want things in a certain order and they volunteer, you know what I mean? Like it's events are a a high intensity administrative task. Right? So thi- this is my concern and I don't, I am not hearing enough from. You know, I I just, you know, we have a thirty-five hour person. Who would likely fall to unless we hired somebody who would be. You know what I'm saying? I I just, there there's some disconnect here that I want. I I want an agreement to scale back and do, you know, this, the five most obvious ones. But maybe not include the bigger ones if we can't get it to align with what staff can do, even with we have that pool of money.
Yeah, currently, these are all just independent ideas.
Yeah, I think we're on, like, I'll say it again, I think we're underestimating the the people that are volunteering there. Well, that's quite sad.
Don't think they're gonna have a lack of people and that's really what like the 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 survey showed. That want this to happen and that will volunteer. I still think there needs to be something. That relieves the burden on the staff of just sort of an organizing. It can't fall under. It can't fall, it can't.
I I totally agree.
So.
Maybe the mayor.
That maybe the mayor coordinates the events.
I'm happy.
Uh because this is important and and so. You know, my 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 role is to manage the finite resources that I have with within line of of the budget and the council goals. And so uh this particular uh July Jubilee. Um from the most recent is is not the highest priority. So you know, when when I staff, I I don't staff for it. And yes, for for something that has run for, say, forty years, I'm also very cognizant that I've been here just over three years. And the longer I'm here, the more and more I learn. So for instance, I know that we had a very large, you know, reserve program. We're just finally, for the first time, up the full staff in the police department. And uh we still have to get a couple folks to the academy. And they, at this point, only have two possible candidates right now that they're trying to get through the reserve program. Okay, the fire department is struggling because um uh we used to operate two fire stations because we had. Um all of the students and all the volunteers and we have lost um a lot of volunteers. And right now, I believe there's only three students in the program. Yes. All right, so it's why after last night's meeting, I pulled the mayor and Councilman Hamilton aside and said. It behooves us to sit down and have lunch and try to work some of these things out. So we don't have these likely. Because there are other things that I can't say in a public meeting that are personnel related that the council just isn't privy to. Um so I don't have all the hours that you think I have. Moreover. I'm also the one that went to the mayor and suggested, okay, I'm going to put the revenue sharing on. You might want to consider to have this conversation about money. Why? Five thousand dollars divided by twenty-five dollars an hour through Cardinal Services is two hundred hours. And if you get it through Cardinal Service, we can assign that person to the committee so that they are actually working with the committee. And trying to help coordinate. So. I I I want you to understand, I am trying to um. Uh be reflective of what I hear from the council, but at the same time protect my staff and stay on task. You just heard me say, you know, I've had five hour, five days and I've worked the entire weekend. My wife did not see me because I'm having to clear tasks. And um and then I see other staff here and it's like, well, what are you doing here? Well, they're catching up. And that's what department heads do. They don't get all that extra time that you think they get. Um and so um so I'm trying to get a happy medium.
So David, what you said there about with Cardinal Services and the hours, I think that's kind of what I'm trying to get to.
Exactly. That's why I'm trying to impress to the council that. It's in two weeks, you can still contact Cardinal Service. And you can have a job description and within two weeks they can have some applicants. And then if the council takes a vote, there's funds and then that person can start. But you know, again, the council has to take action. I can't just. Go out on my own and allocate. I can't create positions. It's against the charter.
So that's what, so that's. And that's what I'm trying to do. So what am I missing to take that action?
Put it on the agenda for next, call a special call meeting, whichever.
That is our request, city reporter, to put that on the agenda for the next meeting.
And we have a number.
And start, yeah, five thousand, okay. Yeah, because we know that we can do that from the revenue.
Yeah, I do. I trust that my fellow council people. And the committee will use that time well and not overburns it. I trust, I trust that.
Well, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, also at the same time, when you talk about the VCB grant. Who fills out that grant application? City?
Well, ultimately, I would like to get the July Jubilee to a nonprofit where they can actually fundraise, create. And and expand. That's where I would like them to get. Um so the initial is if you hire someone and you give a job description. It's not a lengthy application. It's very straightforward. So I think that that person working with the committee. You know, I mean, a committee isn't just show up, chat and then leave. It's roll up your sleeves and, you know, get some work done.
Would the special events committee be able to fill out that application? Because that is something like, that is something that they, somebody on that committee could do. To get the ball rolling.
Uh it would be best not. It would best to have the staff person do it for a lot of reasons.
Right, we can maybe.
Policies, they're covered by our insurance, all of that. There's a lot of things that are invoked there.
So what I'm hearing, so what I'm hearing is that there is this sort of compromise. Yes, and well, compromise position for the city that will work. And you guys need a private conversation for some details and we, I think, okay.
Yeah. That's what I want, I want everyone.
I mean, we gotta start somewhere and but and 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 there's a pathway to do that forward.
Okay.
But we've taken up so much discussion time for things that are easily just have a sit-down meeting and. We can figure a pathway.
You guys go have lunch on Friday.
We blew our seven twenty-seven, so we'll go ahead and I think we have direction. We'll keep this conversation moving forward and um that was our committee reports. Council comments. Councilor Nordoff?
That way to this way, so let's start it.
Oh, well, I do, you know what? I like to start in the, I like it to be random beach time. So sometimes I start at that end. So I'm gonna start with, we'll start with.
Yeah, I'm 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 thinking we're heading here in the right direction and and on a couple of different items, so. Uh I'm happy and a North Bend Marshfield basketball game. North Bend Marshfield wrestling match is tomorrow night at North Bend. Uh and that would be pretty exciting. And then North Bend Marshall Basketball Game is Friday, so. That's that's all I got.
Okay, Councilor Schultz, uh no comment. No comment. Councilor Nordoff?
Uh yeah, first I'd like to say, just to say nice words, nice things about Paul Thompson, who was the park superintendent. And he had worked for the city for fifteen years and I guess he he was left on in December, early December, but. He he uh I just really enjoyed my interactions with him when I volunteered for the parks cleanup, you know, the Bay Area. What is it? Um unification, yes. And the last, last work session we had was, I want to say November, October, November. I think it was October and um. I learned not to try to take ivy off a tree where the one side was this this high and the other side was this high and it's just surrounded with branches. It was a real like potential to twist your knee. But he he got us all working and it was a variety of people. I met the silver cauterist from the wire hauser company. And she told me not to try to take a cutting off my chestnut tree in my backyard. It's that's. Taken over my berry patch. I gotta get that thing out of there. Don't bother taking a cutting. Um and then everybody went back to the park department um bunker and had lunch in the truck bay. And it was just a really nice occasion. So there's that. Um. You know, I I'm just disappointed how this has turned out. I bear a lot of the responsibility, but I'm gonna just say a few comments to a few people. Um Jenny, I have to tell you that that you kind of remind me of Eric Leeson. And I had an interaction with Eric Leeson during a meeting. When Mayor Engelpie had appointed Mr. Milliron to the property committee and I said. The council rules say it can only be counselors on the property committee. And Eric looked at me and said, you're biased. Well, the next meeting, the city attorney had the mayor remove Mr. Milliron from the property committee and he's a liaison.
Madam Mayor, um may I remind you what council comments are and it's in the council rules? So I would like to interject for a point of order.
Thank you. Um please don't direct your comments to the um about the city administrator and those are not factual. That's not what happened.
So so just about counselors then, that's fine.
Uh let's let's go ahead and review what council comments are for. I'm gonna actually have our city.
Be here. I intend to stay here. And your comment, Mayor, about that I I should not represent my neighborhood, I should represent the city. I represented the city in greeting and and an update to the livestock and fowl ordinance when two doors down from me. There were two dozen chickens in the backyard. That would cover everything in the entire city. And I think the council would feel differently if it was next door to them. They would probably feel differently instead of saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
I'm gonna go ahead and move on to.
That's fine. I'm I'm fine. You kind of get my point.
No, we don't get your point. Councilor Carbone, what are your comments tonight? Okay, Councilor Hamilton?
Uh happy new year. It's twenty twenty-four. It's our first meeting and uh. I'd like to see the council go forward on everything.
Councilor Jones?
Yes, I feel like I've spoken a lot, too much. Um so I just want to do do a. I'm constantly um blown away by the dedication of all of our city staffers and in particular for this. Um our uh matter of quarter um really taking over a big management job. Temporary, I suppose, but um you know. These these jobs, you become basically a CEO of your domain. You become um. You you can't possibly know everything that all of your workers. Know and bring forward and you have to figure out how to listen and make choices. And and I just am so impressed by all of our. Dedicated city staffers who just continue to bring top-notch leadership to us. Um the second thing, and I think this was due to the camping ordinance. Somebody can correct me after they hear if I'm wrong, but I'd like to thank Will Stinker. For the beautifully maintained uh porta potty out on the chambers here. Which I've used more than once in my walks where I need to use that. And I just, I really appreciate it. It is a very. Which I've used more than once in my walks where I need to use that. And I just, I really appreciate it. It is a very dirty job. And it's incredible. I thank them for that and whoever found them to do that, thank you. So, that's it. All right.
Um, I, um, I will jump on your uh, dovetail on your comments with the city staff. I think everybody does a really great job. Um, I actually was pulling up here on my phone. I sent this to our city administrator already, but I received a uh, a. A text from a local coach that works at the swimming pool and they wrote, for the record, Macy is amazing. And I love, I loved hearing that too. Such a, a nice um, compliment. Um, I was tuning our finance directors horn today at the um, the uh. Uh, it was the um, Leadership Cooz and Mayor Benetti and I talked about how um, we're governed. And then like right after us, Boomer Wright came in. So I got to partner with the mayor of Cooz Bay. Um, thank you to our city administrator who helped put together a presentation for us. And we went over. The budget of the city. Um, and uh, we showed some really great slides and I told him about your talk of the town. And I, you know, I'm trying to keep peddling that information out there about how your dollar is spent, how your tax dollars are spent. Um, and so that's available still on the city website. So I was telling him um, that. Uh, there's lots of ways that we would love to hear from people whenever they have questions about it. So just call us up. So the offer still extends. And so we do, we have a great, a great staff. Um, I was, when I was at the pool too, um. So my daughter joined swim team this year for the first time and is competing. Holy heck, it is hot in there. But it's a lot better than the North Bend High School track and football field, like in the cold spring track. That's coming up and you freeze her face off there. So. Uh, just, it was really neat. I think the night that I was there, they were hosting, you know, two other different schools for the swimming. The next morning was the robotics competition and um, and I know that there's been a catastrophic uh, kind of event. Uh, uh, mechanical event at Mingus Pool. And so on top of our own citizens and residents of North Bend. Now we're opening the doors and helping in Cooz Bay. And so they were so generous to us when our pool wasn't working. That it's nice that we can return the favor to them. And so, and that was really cool. Um, so I will also let you know, you know, we're continuing. I always try to look for different ways to connect with the residents out there. And not everybody can come at seven fifty-two at night. So we're gonna keep moving forward with the walk with the mayors um, during the lunch hour. So people can connect that way. And the next one is on Monday, um, January twenty-second. And this time it's Cooz Bay's turn to host. So Monday, January twenty-second, twelve to one. Light walk with Mayor Benetti and I, we've got a nice uh, kind of following now. So um, that's gonna keep growing. So. Ready to move forward in twenty twenty-four? That is all of my. You got one more? Okay, I'll allow you one more.
Tomorrow night, we're still on, right, uh, David, for the Cooz Bay Estuary Management.
Oh, Estuary Management Plan, oh yeah.
Plan. Uh, I got fifty-seven pages on my desk. Uh. And that's my tomorrow's project, but I, I just want to remind everybody that. We need one there. We need to.
It'll be us. Does any of our staff come? Was it just the?
Uh, yeah, you'll have staff um.
Okay.
Go with, oh, can't do Wednesday.
Um, was there any other business? Okay, no other business then?
Want to tell, do we want to record? Do you already know who's coming?
Do you need confirmation of who's going tomorrow night at the Estuary Management Plan? Okay, Counselor Jones, well, Eric. Raise your hand if you're going to be there tomorrow night. Everybody but Counselor Schultz.
I said when we were setting the date that I could not do Wednesday.
No, okay. So, um, that ends our council meeting. And then we'll go ahead and move into the U R A. So council meeting adjourned and U R A meeting opened. Okay, I'd like to call to order. The North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Meeting, Tuesday, January ninth, seven fifty-three here in the um, council chambers. After calling the Urban Renewal Agency Meeting Agenda or, after calling the meeting to order, we'll have public comments. I have not seen any public comment this evening. Okay. Um, number three, is there a motion for the approval of the U R A minutes?
We've to approve the U R minutes, the Urban Renewal Minutes from the summer fifth.
Second. Have a first and a second. Um, is there discussion? All in favor of approval of the U R A minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, is there a motion for number four, U R A Resolution approving the adopting agency bylaws?
Uh, wait, hold on. I, I don't know if this is important, but it looks like the notes that we have are from December five. I am not celebrating to.
Okay, do we need to make a amended motion or anything? Um, approval of the U R A minutes from December. It was. Yeah.
What?
We, we're okay? Yeah, the actual date of the minutes that we're approving is for December nineteen. Yeah. Oh, on the other.
Did the right thing. Okay.
Did you catch what she's saying?
Who, our notes say, I, I just want to get it right. Our, our notes say the fifth, our, our, our actual committee minutes say the fifth.
So the typo is on the minutes, not the agenda cover?
Not the draft of the.
Okay.
Cause we want it all to be found.
Right? Is that correct? The typo is on the, not? Okay, so.
The typo is on the agenda, not the minutes.
She did make the motion for the fifth. Okay, so we're good. So that was three. Four was the U R A um, resolution, um, number sixty-nine approving and adopting the agency bylaws.
I'm making the motion to U R A, U R A, approve resolution. Adopting the agency bylaws.
Okay, I heard a first and we throw the second down here at Goll. Okay, a second from Commissioner Urban Renewal, Commissioner Goll. Um, is there any discussion? All in favor of the U R A?
Excuse me, yes, there's discussion.
Yes.
Um, I, let me find it here. The part that allows the city administrator to. Section four, real property leases, licenses, permits and grants. The board hereby authorizes and expressly delegates to the executive director the authority, including but not limited to the authority. Under O R S two seven one point three ten and. Uh, O R S four five seven point two thirty to enter into and renew leases of real property licenses, permits and grants. Not to exceed five years, including, and it goes on. I, I believe um, I'm, I've read um, four five seven point two thirty. And consistently it refers to the Urban Renewal Agency all the way through. And I believe. That the Urban Renewal Agency should delegate to the city administrator. To go ahead and put the lease together, bring the parties together, do all the front end work and then. Hear that presentation and take a vote to approve the lease. It wouldn't be that much more time consuming. And I think it really, it's, it's standard within the urban renewal districts within the state of Oregon. That that is how is it, it is handled. It's, it's an outlier to delegate that authority away. And I think, I think the council needs to have the familiarity with how they're putting together. It wouldn't take much to bring it to the council, lay it out and take a vote. And I think the council. Slash Urban Renewal Agency should be consistent with the rest of the urban renewal agencies in Oregon. And retain that authority themselves. Mister Milliron does do a great job of working with the parties. But I think that the agency needs to retain that authority per state law.
Thank you. I see um, our U R A executive directors hand raised and I also would like to hear from our attorney. Um, online as well. Mister Milliron, if you wanted to go first?
I appreciate that. Um, first and foremost, as I stated yesterday, um, our city attorney has fully uh, vetted uh, these bylaws. But more importantly, we didn't just pull these out of the air. Um, unfortunately, the commissioner's incorrect. Um, this is actually model language out of um, existing bylaws from another U R A. For which you are about to consider a engagement with, which is one of the foremost U R A experts in the state. And so um, we feel very confident that these are sound bylaws, which is why we were able to turn them around so quickly. So I appreciate the uh, comment, um, but unfortunately I disagree.
Okay, and that's what I've wanted, our city attorney, I don't see this as being an outlier, but these are standard practices.
Um, yeah, what, what I would add is that, yeah, I've vetted these, I've vetted these with a colleague. Your administrator or, excuse me, executive director has consulted with an expert. So I don't have a. Whole lot of hesitation uh, telling you, telling the, the U R A board that you can approve these and delegate your authority. Um, Counselor Noroff does raise a, a, a policy consideration for the U R A. So if the U R A wants your executive director to bring every. Everything back to the U R A board, that, that is a, that is a policy decision for, for the U R A. It's not a. A, a legal issue um, per se, from my perspective.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so we had a first and a second. We're having our discussion now. Um, all in favor of um, approving, um, all in favor of the U R A Resolution sixty-nine approving and adopting the agency bylaws? Uh, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. One opposed, motion carries. All right, number five is the North Bend Urban Renewals, Renewal. Consulting scope of work and budget. Um, this was on page nine of your packet for the U R A. Is there a motion from the council?
Um, I move to um, let's see. Agree to the uh, North Bend Urban Rural Consulting Scope of Work and Budget for training and U R As.
Okay. I had a first from Count, uh, from Commissioner Jones, a second from U R Commissioner Schultz. Um, all in favor of moving forward with the.
Discussion.
Um, is there a discussion for the, yes, discussion?
This lady has a really long history of consulting with urban renewals. There are like. Less than fifty urban renewal districts in the state and she's worked for a good handful of those, probably thirty or forty. Over the last twenty or thirty years. Very, very um, capable firm.
All in favor of moving forward with the um, North Bend Urban Rural Agency um, Professional Services Agreement with Elaine Howard and Consulting LLC, please say aye. Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Number six was the welcome to the North Bend sign. This was page thirteen um, of your packet. And we are looking for a motion with the approval of the installation of the welcome to North Bend sign by Arts Design.
I move to approve the installation of the welcome to North Bend sign by Art Signs for sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars.
I'm sorry.
First from uh, Commissioner uh, Jones and the second from Commissioner Hamilton. Um, any discussion?
I have a discussion. I have a, I have a question. Yes, cause is the sixteen thousand eight hundred eighty-six dollars? For each of them or is it, are we supposed to be splitting it? So, cause it looks like it's supposed to be split. And so now I worry that we approved.
Um, so it is um, split. It's how we code it. And so uh, it's why it was on two different agendas. And so when we do the purchase order. Um, uh, we actually code it to two, uh, the sixteen thousand and eight hundred and eighty-six. Um, gets split. So yes, and so if you look at the agenda item, which is generally um. Uh, the auditor will look at the agenda item and then look at the purchase order and then the minutes. And so in this case. Um, you have um, approval on two different agendas and it is a split cost.
Okay.
So I can improve the four hundred dollars of the renew.
Okay, no, that's kind of a picture.
Yes, absolutely. And it's a great question. I appreciate it. Yeah.
The, like, why doesn't it make sense to just have the half for the meeting that it's the half? I mean, it makes sense to have it all together so you can see what's happening. But why, why do we totally take that?
That you see the totality of the cost and you are taking from. Um, out of uh, city funds, T L T, and then U R A. And so you can't cross two governing bodies without the approvals.
Yeah, I mean, that, that part is clear just in how it's written out. I guess, maybe that was your question and I.
No, it's, it's okay. It's a good question.
Sorry, I'm just curious.
All right, so we now have our U R A.
Discussion.
Executive.
Don't we, we didn't post the vote on that? We had the first, the second. If that's what you did, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we have the executive director's report.
Thank you. A couple um, things on Wednesday uh, at the Chambers Wednesday Business Connection. Of course, we are chamber members. Um, our North Bend Main Street Program will be fun center. Uh, the president, Steve Nye and our. Uh, Main Street Executive uh, Director, uh, Steffi Wilson. Um, so that starts at eleven thirty. Um, it's a no host lunch. I don't even know what that really means, but you pay for your lunch if you go. Um, it's like, I don't even know what no host bar is and all this stuff. I always see it, but I don't know what it means. But I think that means you buy, but yet there's somebody there. It's a ho. So that's why I, so never mind. Um, as far as the brewery, um, the internal um, inside um, uh, our. Stephanie Wilson, um, shared photos. It is looking fabulous. Um, it will have a full service restaurant. It will have a tasting room. It will have a stage for live music. And then the city portion, which is the U R A, which is doing the courtyard. Out of the swirl. It's uh, it's going to be a nice addition. Um, and then I really want to give. Um, our Public Works team um, a real shout out. Uh, they have been um, um, uh, from a couple of different departments over there. Working on some storm uh, uh, water issues and some pump issues and drainage issues. Um, uh, we're still dealing with things. For instance, like, you know, we have, you know, an internal leak from the roof, you know, that's supposed to under warranty. So we're, we're trying to eliminate the blight as fast as we can, um, while they're renovating internally. Um, they expect to be open um, in February twenty twenty-four. So that's moving great. And then also um, Pacific Power, um, uh, we are working with them. Um, you may recall that you approved um, streetlights. So there's a portion assigned to the cost to the U R A for streetlights in the U R A area and then the rest of the city. What's also interesting is the streets department, um, for instance, like when the sweeper is not working. Um, they have staff that goes out at the wee hours of the morning and they go out and they log every street light in the city that's not functional. And they have to take all that information. They submit it uh, to the power company. Um, our goal is to um, get the downtown corridor um, uh, converted over to LED as quickly. As possible to eliminate costs. And I have asked them that from the North Bend Yon sign. To the um, uh. Stuff like island, um, uh, that as we do this, um, if there are utility poles that do not have. Um, power on them for uh, holiday lights. Um, that lets work collectively. So I believe Albert's working with Stephanie. And then we're working with uh, Georgia Power. So that as we move down in the future, we keep trying to expand, we can take that corridor. Um, and then, then the goal will be then continue to extend down uh, Virginia. So we're just trying to plan for the future and keep, you know, planning and, and making things happen. So that's the, um, that's my report.
All right. Um, was there anything about U R A that you wanted to ask?
I, I was going to ask if um, you know, where are we at with the property that we purchased? The dry cleaning building that. I, I think it was planned for a tortilla factory and I'm, I'm, I think the Mexican restaurant next door and cafe. The Cafe Mediterranean Place then pulled out.
Hmm, they have pulled up. Um, that project is um, uh, moving forward and is on task. Um, staff um, has uh, done a number of uh, projects and then we've actually had other uh, work on projects. So for instance, staff, uh, Public Works has surveyed the area. We put in the fencing in the back. We put in the retaining wall. Uh, we've emptied out, recycled everything inside the building. Um, we're working on um. Uh, a, a joint use agreement with the um, abutting properties for Ingress Egress. Um, they've agreed to actually um, pay for half of the paving jobs. So we're working towards on that. Um, we have already done phase one, phase two, environmental. Um, uh, next step is uh, we've ordered up the um, hazardous materials. Um, and then um, uh, staff which works on the R F P to put on the street. Has been pulled back a little because they're working on the estuary plan. Um, and so they're trying to get that done. So that we can get them back um, on that project. That's a two-year cycle project. Um, so it is um, um, on, on schedule um, and on budget since the state, you know, is reimbursing for the building.
Great. All right, meeting adjourned.